Oh, yeah, I can hear now.
Okay, great. Okay, so I think I'll open the hearing. So. I assume you've read the legal notice. Are you Jonathan Finley?
I am.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
The appealing party is present. Do you have additional comments that you would like to add to the materials that we have been given? Maybe you can come sit here because I think we'll probably have some questions for you. Yeah.
I started this process last year. I, the idea was to build a house. Make sure that the property was subdivisible. That that was actually forced on me by the by the planning board. I went through the subdivision motions without subdividing. That was that was their way of me proving that there was a an additional a feasible lot on the on the parcel. I went through that. They voted unanimously to approve it. So I went forward. I built the house. I didn't want to pay taxes for two parcels for the year that that I was building. And now I'm just going through the process. I have been for the last couple of months with the planning board. In order to just do the subdivision. And I was told that I needed some variances, which I knew about. One of them, I did not know about the other until a couple of weeks ago. Spoke with spoke with both Ray and Gina about it. And I tried to fill out your 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 questions and answers, you know.
Applicants do.
I just I I felt like I needed just to.
It's good. Yeah, I asked for them actually because I hadn't seen them. So that was good to.
Okay.
So the subdivision that was discussed last year with the planning department is different than what you're presenting here.
Correct. It doesn't include the strip of land that is where the driveway is now. So there's a forty foot driveway apron there, which the initial line, it's about seventeen feet from that line. So the way it would have when the county got involved with the with the they gave a plan for the septic design. That plan changed in October after the tank was in the ground. And then they redesigned the septic system so that the the tank had to come out and all that went in this year. I had to wait all winter long. The on their new plan, the which I believe there is a copy of that on file here. It shows where the I'm not even sure what they call it. It's the future distribution. Yeah, there's only field, but then they say, well, you know, if this ever goes bad, you need to have enough room to have another leach field. Which would have cut into would have actually been on that other on that other property if if we stuck with that flag. That's how close to the road it would have gotten. In addition to that, with the forty foot driveway, it didn't seem feasible to have this seventeen foot a right of way for a driveway. The driveway is at at the property line, the the proposed property.
Right.
And then on on the other side of the driveway, there would have been a seventeen foot strip. Maybe you know, I'm not even sure how much maybe, you know, fifteen feet of of grass.
So Henry, this is this is what was originally from last year.
Okay.
Yeah, so this was, I'm just gonna interrupt you. Sure, Henry, I haven't seen it. Yeah, we talked about it. Yeah, so so that was originally what they had been talking about last year. So frontage. So really what it is, see this little piece, that's probably the seventeen feet you're talking about. Easement driveway. And there's the septic, which you said the septic moved closer to the road or the field or something.
Correct, the field did. The 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 rest of the septic actually moved on the side on the left hand side of the house.
Okay, I see. Yeah, 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 yeah.
There's the leach field where the replacement, so the replacement one is which one. And what is what is this?
You wanna come see?
Penciled out area here on property.
So these are sketches that we had drainage from. Did you want me to project?
Correct. So there is
That was from last year.
The original property. The original property of the reason why this is a major subdivision and not a regular subdivision. Okay. So the property it was is this field on Sodom Road, Sodom, Sherwood and Nottingham.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that.
It used to have frontage on it still has fifty feet of frontage on on this side in between myself and my neighbor. Towards Route seventy nine. Correct, there's fifty acre. So this land here that is still here, that's all of that frontage is on all the, I'm sorry, all the usable frontage is on Sodom Road and Sherwood Road and Nottingham, a little bit on Nottingham.
Okay.
So what it's create, what it's kind of like broken up into two neighborhoods now. Where the big piece of property up here is a neighborhood on a different on on different roads.
Right.
Where at a time twelve years ago before before these along these properties along which always existed, they were just all part of the same parcel, right? So they started being cut up along that line. The neighborhood looks just like this. Like if you if you go down the road, you know, there's there's houses that have very small bits of frontage. There are houses with, you know, a little bit more.
Yes, some are in district in different districts, however, I mean, they look the same, but they're actually compliant, even though they have. Yeah.
Totally with you. Yeah, I I I'm just saying, as far as the as far as the 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 neighborhood still looks like a neighborhood. That's
Okay.
Basic area.
Yeah, yeah. These are actually compliant. Because there there's a funny, some are in a different district. He's in, let's see, I'll just tell you. Well, essential. And then there's neighborhood residential. So even though these have the same frontage, they're actually in compliance, some of those.
Well, actually, at one time they were all because it was only a hundred and twenty five feet until two thousand twelve.
Okay.
Changed.
Okay.
One acre. You're about fourteen years, twelve years late. I've had to go through all this force maneuver.
Okay.
I'm I'm starting to get really used to these meetings.
And you still have to go back to the planning board if we approve this.
Yeah, this this at the end of this.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So questions anymore? And I have to ask Mike, I'm not going to forget about you, Mike, this time.
So I I don't have an understanding of why the why it changed from the flag lot to what it is now.
I was given two surveys by T G Miller. And I sent Ray both of them. I also took a look at the other properties on the the other properties in that area. And the way that the the way that the flag lot looked, I couldn't put a driveway in the shaded area that you see there. Because that is a non-designated wetland. So the 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 only place to put the driveway is where the driveway is right now. That's that was my that that was it's the only way to have a driveway there. So in my own conversation with with T G Miller, they didn't understand why you would have this flag lot of basically almost all of the frontage of the flag lot because it was so narrow into the into the property.
No, this is what they this is what was discussed last year. This this is stuff from last year. This is not current. So in originally last year, this piece was here that we see this little hook was going to be still part of this one.
Okay.
He'd have to give an easement, this little piece here to use that driveway. And the plan, that is how see, and that is what the planning board had said. I mean, did you see? So this is again from last year from the depart planning department. And this is so this is twenty four. And then that's that's also.
So you have you have preliminary approval and you're just waiting on final approval?
Correct.
That's your understanding, T G?
The planning board did make a recommendation to approve this at their last meeting. By a majority, was not unanimous, but it was a majority.
But it would stand as a preliminary approval.
Do you have any more questions for the applicant? We may ask as we go through this. How about you, M J?
No, that was the
The main one?
Yeah.
Okay. Mike, do you have any questions?
I don't right now. Thanks, Jenna.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to? Are there comments from anyone else present? Is that did that person leave the meeting?
Hi, no, this is Dave Sandoval. I'm a resident on Snyder Hill Road. It's down the street from this proposal. And I don't necessarily have anything against the proposed variant. But I do want to sort of remind the the Board of Appeals about the Dryden Town Plan and that it is rural residential and that you're making an exemption based on a higher population density. There's two houses that are on an acre or so each that that's higher density than is you know, really in the comprehensive town plan. And as a resident here, you know, I've seen a lot of development on Snyder Hill Road over the past few years. And it's getting to the point where it's getting uncomfortable. So I just want to make my perspective known.
Okay, thank you.
What do you say?
Well, he's he's saying really, and and this is the the dissenting votes on the planning board agreed with this. It doesn't fit with the town's comprehensive plan for rural residential. That which is to reduce density, keep to those frontages and all that. And the three dissenting votes on the planning board also wanted to make that point. And I mean, the issue is this house, and I know we're not supposed to consider it. I mean, it's it does exist already.
On the other hand, every variance we grant does falls in that same place.
Yeah, to some degree, absolutely.
Doesn't fit comprehensive point.
Right, right. So, okay, thank you for that. And I there's no one else right here. Okay. And no response letters from anything that I need to see?
No letters.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what happens now is we stay, you can stay or leave and you can find out what we decide. Or you we're gonna now go through and make our decision tonight if you want to. Okay, great. Okay, so let's number one, whether undesirable change would be produced in the character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. I'm having a hard time thinking it would, given that it does exist already. So however it's carved up or not carved up. I don't think that changes the character. What do you think, M J and Henry?
I don't think it changes the character of the neighborhood.
Let's hear what you wrote, Henry.
My long winded.
It's good. I like it.
There are several lots within the area that fail to meet one or both district frontage or lot area requirements. It should be noted, though, that this is an older developed neighborhood and the existing non-conforming lots did conform at the time that they were developed. And only became non-conforming lots requirements as as lot requirements increased. That said, it's more than likely that these two proposed non-conforming lots will go unnoticed and are unlikely to have any impact on the existing neighborhood character. Whether these lots will be a detriment to the area, only time will determine that aspect.
Hmm, okay. Let's you want to make that a motion?
Sure.
I'll second. Yep. All in favor? Okay.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Mike. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible feasible alternative to the variance. I think very clearly.
I don't think there's any alternatives either. This or nothing.
Meaning this then he wouldn't subdivide and.
Well, you couldn't purchase property from anybody else to make them conforming because he's basically locked into what he has. So either gets to do this or not. I don't think there is an alternative.
I agree. I don't think there is an alternative.
Okay. I mean, the only alternative would have been this flag lot that they talked about, but they still would have needed a variance for acreage.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So even if he had gone the other route, he would have had to have a variance. Okay. Why don't we make that a motion? That there is
Sounds good to me.
Okay, do we so?
Everybody has.
Yeah, why don't you read me what you wrote? Because we can't just say, no, there isn't. We need to have a justification.
Existing tax map, it is hard to determine whether surrounding property or properties could be purchased to allow both lots to conform. Additionally, applicant has not shared any, well, I can forget that now because he has. Okay. I I think
Okay.
I think that's it.
Well, and you've written that alternative configurations would involve a right of way to be granted for the driveway and utilities that could potentially lead to disputes about plowing and mowing in the future. You'd have to you'd have a shared. I don't know about that so much, but okay.
I don't think I saw.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so let's let's say that no, because there really isn't. I mean, unless he takes down the house and doesn't build the second house, but no, let's that's that doesn't make any sense. Okay, so I will let's make Henry's, we'll cobble together what Henry said. I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. And Mike, jump in if you have questions or comments.
Yeah, yeah, I will, of course.
Yeah, or we'll make you make a motion. So whether the requested variance is substantial? Yes.
I think that.
Yeah, yeah, very, yes. You know, one is more than fifty percent.
Yep.
Okay. M J, you want to make that motion? And we'll put I'll put the percentages in. So yes, it is substantial.
It's substantial because of the amount of road space or the size of the lot is quite a bit less than what's required. Correct?
No, I I don't think it's the acreage, it's the frontage, right?
The frontage, yeah.
Like misses by twenty two hundredths of an acre, but one is just over needs almost fifty percent.
Yeah, for the for the frontage, right.
Right.
And the acreage.
Oh.
You see, here we end up with one point zero four four acres. You need two. Here, we're only short twenty two hundredths of an acre because he has one point nine seven eight acres. So this I think it's substantial because both lots require area consideration and furnished consideration.
Okay, area hadn't really come into my my thoughts there.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
Five five over something.
Yeah, so it's a two acre requirement there?
Yes, because it's a major subdivision residential area.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's why I keep focusing on an acre. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so yeah, for so for both what what M J said, for for both acreage and frontage, it is quite substantial.
It does.
Yeah, okay.
That's your motion?
Yeah. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't.
Okay, you want to second it?
Sure, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Four, would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? No.
I I I had given the variation in surrounding lot areas and frontages, some extremely large, some very small, and all uses, including these two proposed minor area of disturbance proposed. And it does not appear to have any adverse effects on the on the environment or the neighborhood. It's consistent with neighborhood uses.
Okay, okay. You had written that the parcel has historically hosted three habitable structures, but there will be three units. Well, but it was a duplex, right?
There was two duplexes and one non-duplex, one single.
So there were actually five
Five.
Five homes in some.
They are actually still shown on your tax map.
Right.
The two where the duplex is now, there was another duplex directly behind it.
Okay.
And then there was another in the same configuration, but instead of splitting them to be a duplex, it was just a it was the same size, same configuration.
So on this parcel land that you own?
Correct.
Okay, so the argument we could add to that argument that he's actually reducing the the traffic and number of dwellings. Yeah, okay, so we can I can I'll patch that back in, which is we're looking for things to stand on here, you know. So I I would make the motion by taking what Henry has just said and adding the fact that actually it may have a potentially positive effect by reducing the number of dwellings. And that that's a concern that someone here who attended this hearing brought up, you know, that's so that's the motion, as galling as it sounds, but I usually come together here.
Well, we throw in my notes and your notes.
Yeah, exactly.
You have notes.
Yes, good.
Somebody will figure it out.
Mike, you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
All right, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I dare you to repeat the motion.
Okay, five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Yes.
Of course it is.
Everyone, the answer is always yes to that. I I would add, however, that he did get advice last year from the planning board that would or department that and board leading him to believe that it was subdividable.
That that's certainly worth.
Mentioning it's sort of it what it
He's been led here by other agencies.
It's sort of a good faith reliance on what he heard last year from the planning board and department. And went forward with that. He's also because of the configuration of that particular property, he's mentioned problems with septic and driveway conflicting if he had divided it the way it was originally configured. What did you have first? What what were what was what'd you write down, Henry? Self created, if you changed?
Mine mine sort of changes because there's actually been something submitted to review now, so.
Okay, okay, and
Mine is kind of useless.
Okay, okay, so it was self.
That too was useless.
Okay. So it was self-created, but it was also based on some good faith reliance on advice he had gotten last year. And the planning department in addition has recommended that we approve this. That doesn't, we don't have to, but it's that adds a little to it.
Planning board.
I'm sorry, yeah, planning board. And I get corrected in my notes, but so that also, I think that good faith kind of reliance on that initial on the narrative that the memo that he's received and talked with them last year. And the fact that more recently, the planning board has recommended that we approve it is mitigating factors of self-creation, self-created snafu. So again, I will hubble that together in a more coherent way, but that's my motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so let us go to so we are determining that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community, and we've given the reasons in our five questions.
Right.
So we have, we always put, hold on one sec. Yeah, it is. It's a different one that Gina has done, and I'm just finding the ones we usually did, which always has the we always do.
Yeah, where it doesn't.
Has a seeker, is that? Yeah, okay.
Seeker.
Yes, now they are doing seeker.
Well, we're we're in a
The planning board is out in seeking.
Okay, here's the old one.
Yep.
Here we are, yes.
Z B A is an involved, involved, they're involved, involved.
Involved, involved, high end.
Agency.
Right, this new form I'll show you doesn't have the thing about seekers. Well, that's not well. Which we usually have to say something about.
My mind is left me. Lead as lead agency. And seeker review.
Even if it doesn't, it's just in our, you know, this is the old ones, we've got a few discussions. And at the end, it has this, which we always
Make a copy of that right now.
Yeah, I have. Yeah, I have some, but so in the future, just if, instead of, if you, if we are, for some reason, maybe this is a better one for us to have.
It's worth your knees, and I can.
Yeah, take a copy, there you go, absolutely.
Question, has county planning had this, or is it a?
Um, it's a, it's in a donut hole where it doesn't.
Okay. So.
Okay. Yeah, that one's probably easier for us, cause it's got more space to write, and so, thanks Gina.
Ag and markets is exempt? It's not in an ag district, right?
No, it's rural, it's rural.
Uh, well, you know, an ag district can be.
Yeah, right.
I did.
Maybe one of them, Trigg and Mark, it's a situation.
Okay. So I just put down, the S D A is an involved agency, whereas the planning board. As lead agency has assumed seeker.
Okay, great.
And then I just put uh, county planning exempt, Ag and Markets exempt.
Okay, good, so I'll add that to the record. Good, and your notes, and your notes, okay, so what we need to do now, however, is, um. We vote, let me use again, we're the, we have our, what do we, our normal.
Oh.
Yeah.
You have.
Did I just take it from you?
No.
No, the one where you just wrote, where you just wrote stuff down. Uh, what happened to it, you just made your notes about the seeker.
Oh, you want that?
I want that, I want that.
Maybe I did, maybe I didn't, oh, no, I didn't.
Okay. Okay, so, yes, so we need to make a decision, so I, would someone like to approve to. Um, grant this variance?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it, because. The planning board started this, let them finish it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it.
And then, of course, I have a condition that we must receive final planning board approval.
Sure, okay, we'll add that to the condition, I, I mean, I think, given that. It's, it's a very big ask, and, and yet, because of the history of this and your history with the planning board and the way. Um, it's moved forward, and there are other mitigating factors, you are reducing the number of dwellings that used to be there. Um, I mean, we can go on record saying, yeah, it doesn't really conform to comp plan, and in another way, we might not have approved it, but.
Like I said, he was led here by the planning board. They lots appear that they can function, even though they're inconsistent with.
Mm-hmm.
Requirements, uh, i- i- they can function in the, um. Light that they're supposed to function in within, um. And given that he has to get final approval from the planning board, let's let them make that decision.
Mm-hmm, okay. So we will, I move to. Approve the variance with the condition that he must receive final planning board approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, okay, so you're done with us.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, good. Yeah, good luck, good luck.
Thank you, yep.
Okay, now I want your notes.
Oh, um.
That.
You already got that.
I got that, I want that, okay, so, Joy, I don't remember if we had minutes. Did you show, we did, okay, so then, yes, so would someone like to, um. Move to approve the minutes of last month? Do you have any changes?
I don't have any changes, I most, we, last month's.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I would move to adjourn this meeting.
Do you have anything for next month?
Not yet, okay.
Good.
Does somebody wanna second that motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Mike, are you come, are you gonna move back soon?
Yeah, I am, I.